Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our August 23, 2022 Gloucester City Council Meeting in the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council. And according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It is a finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual shall be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity, or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. In this vein, we as city councils do not condone language that is discriminatory or offensive and will not accept it at city meetings. I'd now like to begin by announcing the names of the city councilors that are on the call. Shawn Nolan, our vice chair, Jeff Worthley. Jeff, could you put your screen on so we can see you? At-large counselor Jason Grow, Scott Memart, Ward one city council counselor, Tony Gross, at-large counselor, Tracy O'Neal, Ward two city counselor, and Jamie O'Hara, at-large city council. It looks like Council Majota is not yet here. And I think that's it. And I'd like to welcome members of city staff. Tonight, we have our chief of our Gloucester Fire Department, Eric Smith. Welcome. We have our Public Works Director, Mike Hale. Welcome, Mike. We have Bob Rivas, who is our assistant chief of the fire department. We have Dana Martin, who is our environmental engineer for the Public Works Department. We have, I believe, Ryan Markey, who is our city engineer. We have Jill Cahill, who is our chief administrative officer, Kenny Costa, who is our auditor. And I think that is all I can see. Let me just look to see if there's any additional members of city staff that are in as attendees.
CAO KL.
I said her. Thank you. So I think I think we've introduced everybody that is on the call. So welcome everyone. Oh, and of course, Joanne Seanos. How can I not introduce Joanne, our city clerk, who's holding everything together in the city clerk's office with all the early voting applications right now. So welcome everyone. So first order of business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so the first order of business is Council O'Hara would want to request a moment of silence.
Great. Council O'Hara, thank you for leading us in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Just want to have a moment of silence for the anniversary of 13 brave soldiers who gave their lives evacuating Americans from Afghanistan Kandahar International Airport when a suicide bomber unfortunately detonated and 13 soldiers, one of which was from Lawrence. The anniversary is this coming Friday, and I just want to take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the city council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the city council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Would anyone here that is on the call tonight like to speak to the council for matters that are not on the agenda? I have an M Lucido and a Pamela Steele right now. So Madam Clerk, if you could bring in M Lucido, if you could introduce yourself and in your address. You have up to three minutes.
Now, I saw Pamela Steele first, so I brought her in first.
Oh, that's terrific. Pam Steele, welcome. And you know what to say. So introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you for allowing me this time. I appreciate it. I'd like to bring up an issue that's been a longstanding issue that I kind of thought would go away, but it hasn't. The parking on the sidewalks has escalated exponentially, and I really feel as an avid walker that it's dangerous and it is against the law. I understand it's touchy, and I know it is, but I think it needs to be addressed. Now, on Haskell Street, where I start out my walk, everyone has a driveway, and nobody puts their car in the driveway, and they've blocked the entire sidewalk. East Main Street is ridiculously dangerous, because if you go out into the street, two cars can barely get by. So if you have to go in the street to get around the car, you're really putting your life in jeopardy. I know I've talked to several people, and I haven't gotten a response, but this time I'm really asking if I could have a letter, because every week we can get a letter, but I never get a letter. So I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I understand. I fully accept that it is a nightmare, but I really think it has to be addressed. And I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Appreciate you being on the call and speaking. Thank you, Pam. Next is M Lucido. Would you introduce yourself and your name and address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us about things that aren't on the agenda.
Hello, folks. My name is Michael Lucido. Live at nine Sunset Hill Road. Thank you for the time to let me talk. And just wondering if we could bring up the private road elephant in the room that I know a lot of people in the city are not happy with. I've gone to the DPW a few times to bring up the area of Ferry Street, Sunset Hill Road, and Perry Winkle Lane. I get the boilerplate answer, you know, sorry, that's a private way, private way. But those roads are falling apart. And, you know, if my numbers are correct, you know, 50% of the city roads are deemed private, you know, that just seems like a number that for the public is too large to take. You know, we all pay real estate taxes, we all pay excise tax, and it's just not fair that it's going to be put onto the residents to repair the roads. The sewer project, when that came through, destroyed those roads, and they just continued to fall apart and fall apart behind the rear entrance to the hospital. A lot of runoff there that is destroying the corner on Ferry Street, and it's just a war zone in the winter to make it through. And then, you know, another area is the intersection of Sunset Hill and Perry Winkle. Get a lot of runoff from the Poles Hill Fire Road. That's destroying a couple sewer grates there, and my neighbor's driveway, there's huge puddles, and you know, we just need some more help than we're getting. And that's all I have, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is a presentation from the fire chief Smith on an update on Poles Hill brush area.
So we're delighted to have both Chief Smith and Assistant Chief Bob Rivas on the call tonight. And on behalf of all of us, thank you for all of your hard work fighting these brush fires, the house fires. You have all been rock solid, doing everything you can for the city. It's appreciated. So I'll turn the meeting over to you, chief. And I don't know, Bob, can you can you put your video on so we can see you? And we'd love to hear from both of you.
Hi, good evening, council. Yes, we give you a quick update on Poles Hill, and it has certainly been a busy start to the new fiscal year for us come July 1. And, you know, we've been off to kind of a kind of a rough start for summer, if you will, with a lot of house fires backed up by obviously this drought season and water restrictions, and then, you know, numerous numerous small brush fires in town, and then obviously the Poles Hill fire that was pretty expensive. So specifically to the Poles Hill fire, you know, that call came in to us in the in the most recent version, if you will, of it. So we did have a smaller fire up there prior to the first of August. That fire was extinguished, or at least we felt that it was extinguished. You know, this this fire could have been a rekindle, but that fire that occurred originally was certainly set by humans, right? So there's no ignition sources up there. We had no lightning. So, you know, most of the fires that were that were dealing with around town, you know, they have human interaction were usually the problem, if you will, in that regard. So this fire is no different than that. This call came in on the first for this fire at about 10:30. The initial incident commander was Deputy McRobb, who was in charge that day. I assume command from the deputy at about 12:45 as this continued to escalate. By about 2:30 in the afternoon, about four hours into the incident total, we had it pretty well contained, about 90% contained was our best estimate. We had, you know, the command unit was out there. We had 10 engine companies, one ladder company, one rescue company, an ambulance, five forestry trucks, rehab unit, drone and spotting operations, four staff cars, and lots of lots of mutual aid assistance to get those kind of numbers out there. So you're looking at, you know, a total of the total personnel on scene just for that first day in that initial firefight, if you will, to get that thing contained and extinguished for the most part. Obviously, as we all know, this this thing has continued to flare up occasionally day to day with numerous hotspots and lots and lots of hours of energy and effort by our personnel up there to continue to keep it contained. Because these fires, as some people know, and it was new to me coming from the Midwest, this is a different kind of brush fire when you get out in the eastern areas that have this kind of rock and this kind of topography, as well as just the soil conditions and so forth, where you have a lot of peat, and you get deep underground fires that burn for days, and that you just can't put enough water in the area, especially in these conditions. If it was wetter, the water would actually penetrate the soil better. But when it's this dry, you know, examples, you know, the desert, and when you get these major rainfalls in dry areas like they did out in Death Valley, you just get huge washouts, because the water won't absorb into the ground. It's basically a barrier. And so we're dealing with that up there, even after these couple of minor rains that we've had. They really have not extinguished those underground fires completely. So as time goes on, these things are going to kind of smother on their own, and they'll burn out of the fuel that's available to them. And again, we, you know, we're up there almost every day, several times a day initially, patrolling the area, dealing with hotspots. You know, these fires are so deep underground that even the technology that the city's invested in on our trucks with thermal imagers and the like that are awesome in a structure fire inside a house to locate victims and the seat of the fire, they do you almost no good out in these kind of conditions when the fire is two, three feet below the soil, which is insulating it. You can't see it, and you can't find it until it shows itself with a little puff of smoke, or fire breaks out into some remaining fuel, and then our folks are chasing it again with hand lines. So the the overall operation, you know, we had about 48 Gloucester firefighters that day alone, the on-duty shift, plus all the staff that was called back, and an off-duty group that was called back to relieve those folks after getting beat up out in the woods for six, eight hours to relieve them for that evening shift and get our people back in the stations covering the city, relieve all of the coverage companies from out of town. You know, we had people all the way in from from Hamilton, Wenham, and Peabody, and beyond, Middleton even, that was in covering our station. So we we pulled in a lot of resources from across the county that we had to release and get things back under our coverage and control, and kind of off of our neighbors' backs, so to speak. We had about a half dozen DCR forestry folks in every day, and we had about a dozen in the last couple of days to help really get in there and a kind of a final push with the containment to get that done. They also brought out heavy equipment, made some cuts in there to clear back a lot of the brush and open up some areas for containment, and to really get in there with the water drops and saturate areas to to create basically that barrier around the fire to keep that fire from jumping out of the area that was burning into that unburnt section of Poles Hill. We also had, like I said, three drone operators and spotters up there, the rehab unit. So in all, we had about 75 personnel on that first day that came in and were operating at one point or another. We didn't really have 75 at any one time. That's just kind of the total total amount of folks that that cycled through that entire incident for that first day. The secondary days after that, you know, it all depended on on what was happening on a particular day as to how many people we had to commit to those events. And in the first few days, as all of you know, it was still pretty smoky up there. We're still getting a lot of flash fires, you know, that were popping up. So it was a lot of chasing. I give Chief Rivas a huge amount of credit. You know, I came in and took over command and stood at the back of a truck, which is kind of the easy job, not real labor intensive. You know, what do you guys need? Let me go get it. And and he did the lion's share, him and all the deputies and the senior officers up on that hill coordinating the effort of all of those people that were, you know, literally in the trenches dealing with this thing. So ton of work by all of our firefighters, all our neighboring communities that stepped up and came in to help us out. You know, without their support, we it would have definitely been a different story. The initial the initial fire burnt about 10 acres was our estimate initially, which grew to about a total of maybe about 14-ish total acres that burned up there after the containment zones were established to kind of put us in a better position, a less risky position, and allow some of that fire to just consume vegetation that was overgrown, and that was 99% likely going to burn anyway. So there wasn't an effective way to control it and stop it. The better way to handle it was to create that containment, let that burn through to the containment and stop it there where we had more of a fighting chance and kind of cut your losses, so to speak. So we kept it to about a 14-acre site up there from the estimates that we got. DCR folks are great at providing us that information. So it's been about 22, 23 days of this ongoing effort. So again, this this last week, we haven't had any flare ups, which is good. We've had a few hotspots that they've worked on. This rain has helped. The weather turned and got much cooler, which is helpful not only to the scene up there, but also to our personnel that are trudging up and down that hill trying to get work done. So it's been it's been a pretty, pretty significant effort. You know, we got a lot of new personnel that haven't seen this kind of brush fire ever. You know, we've been, knock on wood, kind of lucky over the last decade, at least that I've been here, and we haven't had an event that took off and moved this quickly. So it, you know, hats off to all the new folks and all the seasoned vets that that all came together to to get this thing under control pretty well. So the total reports that we've written on this, including that that original fire, and then the fire again on the first, we've had about because of all the calls that come in from the neighbors, as well as our patrols, our officers going up, looking for hotspots and problems up there. You know, we've written about a total of about 23 reports total, all based on this one incident, if you will. So there's, you know, many different reports to kind of go through and put together in the long run to kind of get a better idea of, you know, what all manpower and hours were put into this thing. But so far, my 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 guestimates on things that that are kind of quantitative right now that we can really put a number on is obviously, we had all the airdrops that came in with the Army National Guard and their Hilo. So we did about 80 drops in the two days that they cycled through, which was about 600 gallons a drop puts us at, you know, about 48,000 gallons, 50,000 gallons that they dropped. And we've used probably another 50,000 gallons up there during that period of time. And again, this is, you know, what we've flown out of hose lines is a total guesstimate. So, you know, Mike and the water operators may be able to quantify that a little bit better. It's probably kind of hard for them to tell the difference between, you know, normal usage and what we use, because those meet, you know, there's no meters on the hydrants that we're using. So it's really difficult to gauge. And when you're flowing forestry lines, there's not a real simple way to calculate how much water are you using when you have that many folks operating handlines. It's just, it's a really difficult math puzzle, and and our engine operators that usually track that data and help to provide Mike and his staff our water usage every year on fires and training. When they when they can't see what the the end user is doing with that hose line, makes their job really tough to write down anything accurately on usage. So again, that's that's a pretty big guesstimate. Total acres, again, like I said, is about 14, maybe up to 16. Total overtime cost from the beginning of this thing till today is about $40,000, which includes three personnel that were injured up there. We had one out for about two weeks, one that's hopefully going to be back sooner rather than later. And then we've got one that's going to be out for a while, had to have some surgery on on some broken bones. So unfortunately, the the hill took its toll on on personnel as well. So we've got, like I said, three folks that were injured up there, unfortunately. And oddly enough, it all happened after the first day when it was, you know, the most fire and the most activity. But it's just, you know, chasing it around, and the conditions up there are just difficult at best. So those of you that have hiked it up there know how tricky it can be, and there's there's some tough spots up on that hill. And beyond that, we've we've expended about $13,000 in in hose and supplies and food and water, you know, for the rehab and so forth up there, as well as equipment and uniforms that have been damaged in the effort. So all said and done, we're probably at about $53,000 to $54,000 of expense for this one particular fire. And the the final thing in my report, and I'll turn it over to Bob in case I miss things, which I typically does do, and then he's my right hand and takes care of me. So, you know, the investigation started almost immediately into this. You know, police were excellent at coming in and working on this from the original fire up there. And so they they have they have tracked that down and done done their due diligence. They filed charges that went forward, arrests were made, and the issue has been put before the DA, and they've taken this to court. So, you know, all our all parties have done what we can do to hold folks accountable on this. And now it's in the hands of the DA and and the court system. And, you know, it's not something, obviously, that I'm at liberty to discuss, and I don't do the investigation. So it wouldn't be appropriate for me to to get into that part of it anyway. But I will entertain any questions that you may have directly for me, or we can let Bob jump into anything I missed, and then go from there, however you want to handle it.
Right. Yeah, let's continue with Bob. And Bob Rivas, thank you for being here. We totally appreciate it. And we'd love to hear from you, because we know that your your sleeves were rolled up for the whole event, and you've been really working hard with your team. So you have the floor. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you for for the invite. The only thing I the only thing that I would like to say other that that, you know, the chief might have forgotten is just to thank all the neighbors and the community that really stepped up and supported us. Everybody was out there giving everybody cold drinks and and food and that's that sort of thing. And I just wanted to put a shout out to the National Guard for in the state for all the help they gave us. That was tremendous. Like, like the chief said, without them, we'd probably still be up there. So other than that, I think the chief covered it as well as can be. So that's about all I got, unless you guys have specific questions for either of us.
Well, this council isn't shy. So at this point, councilors, let's ask questions. Counselor O'Neal.
I thank you. Is there such a thing? Can you explain to me what a fire road is? And do we have any up there?
Yeah, so fire roads are usually pretty basic and simple paths and roadways, typically not well improved, but good enough to get heavy equipment through. In this case, there is a fire road that that runs through Poles Hill Sunset Road, which, if you look on the maps, if you look at the overhead, you can kind of see it going through there. And so that that is the kind of almost the dividing line from the the side that burnt towards Washington Street, and where we had significant amount of access and water supply up there. Beyond that, it was it was our folks running up the side of that hill, you know, with hose lines and and whatnot to to get at it at the at the fringes as it was approaching some of the homes over there. So, you know, you're accessing it from the middle of the hill, trying to work in towards the homes, when really the goal, you know, obviously, the goal is to keep that thing from jumping that road and getting into that next section. But beyond that, the the primary risk and concern is is protecting people's homes and the folks that live there, right? So, you know, getting getting a good position on this fire is is difficult, just given the topography and how it's laid out, the water supply, you know, it is pretty good over there. But it unfortunately, the hydrants are typically on the opposite side of the street from where we are. So we've had, you know, put out hose ramps, which usually worked out. We've had a few cars run a few hoses over and pop those, which throw a huge wrench into the operation when folks are on the top of a hill trying to put out the fire, and all of a sudden, the water goes away. So, you know, those are those are those operational things that, you know, the police were excellent at getting folks over there. But, you know, we'd be in one spot, then pack up and run to another. And that was more in the subsequent days, chasing that thing around the hill than in that initial day. The initial day, we pretty much shut down the whole thing and and owned the whole neighborhood, right? So it it was pretty easy for us, and the police did a great job in in helping that. And the neighborhood, like Bob said, was awesome. I mean, we had folks inviting us into their homes to use the bathroom. Like, you guys have been out here all day. If you if you need to use the bathroom, just come in. It's like, we're filthy. Well, I'm not filthy. I was pristine and clean, a little smoky. But, you know, all my people were filthy black, and they're getting invited into folks' homes. That says a lot for this community and the folks that live there and and their support, which which was awesome.
The fire roads, are they up there, are they sufficient, or do they need to be improved, or added to, or are they? I mean, is that something we should address?
Yeah, I mean, you know, fire roads, I would, you know, just like I've said it in the neighborhoods, and and we've gotten a lot of pushback on on just building construction and what roadways and driveways are are required for people to build a house. And, you know, we had a lot better language in 2015 than what we have now regarding my ability to impose fire access, so to speak. You know, fire roads are, you know, they're out in the middle of the woods, and they're wicked expensive to maintain. And as much as I'd love to say, yeah, oh, yeah, we we definitely need more, and we need to do that. You know, that that's a big question and a big topic and a big budget issue that that takes a lot more than just my input and opinion. You know, this is this is really a community issue that that's got to go to the mayor's office and and be cited decided as what is a priority. And and if we can't afford it, or don't want to do it, or the community is against it, or it's not necessary, then then what are we looking at for fire suppression and options going forward? You know, obviously, this is a tough year with the drought and and the conditions that we find in the woods. It's not usually this dry and this much tinder, but it is now. And those are the times that you might look back and go, why, I really wish we would have widened that road or had a few more cuts here or there. And it's just, you know, it's kind of the nature of the beast.
Okay. All right. Thanks a lot.
Our CAO has her hand raised, and I'm grateful that Mike Hale's on the call, too, in case we have any questions that we need to defer to him. Follow up on that question.
I just wanted, thank you. I just want to follow up, Counselor O'Neal, to let you know, as Community Development Director, as part of the MVP planning process, which included a meeting, a stakeholder meeting in, I want to say, April 2018, maybe 2019. I think Counselor Gilman was there. All the chiefs were there. Anyway, at that point, we were talking about how climate change, you know, what are the biggest worries for people related to climate change? And as we know, climate change really leads to droughts, which leads to virus, right? So at that point, it did make it on to the list of priorities, but it, I want to say, it wasn't top three. For this administration, obviously, this is our first stab at this and having this discussion. So we were thrilled that, and Chief Smith, please remind me his name, the guy from the State Forestry Service, Dave Guarino?
Dave, yeah, Dave Chalino, he's he's awesome. He's the guy that got us the chopper.
Yeah. And he so he has offered to work with us specifically to come up with a forest fire plan and take a look, dive a little deeper into that. And we expect that. And we expect that if this is something that the will of, you know, the council and the administration and the people, you know, to move it up the list a bit, then we'll put it on the list for grants, looking into grants, because MVP, there's MVP grants that follow up on the plan. So there is planning and discussion about this prior to this administration. And, you know, now's the perfect time to take another look at it. So I just want to make sure you knew all those pieces were moving.
Thank you. What's MVP? I'm sorry, I don't know that.
I'm sorry, what?
MVP grants.
Oh, that's municipal vulnerability preparedness.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor, if you go on the community development website, you can hit the link and there's a full presentation of what was discussed when we did the brainstorming back in 2018 and all the updates. So it's really helpful for members of the public to take a look at that. I think Councilmember, you were at that meeting as well, if I remember correctly. Maybe even Tony Gross, who at the time was on the Waterways Board. We had sixty-seven people doing constructive brainstorming in small groups to prioritize what the biggest needs are for the city. It was really a really well collaborative process that we held. So who else would have some questions? Council Grow?
Chief Smith, thank you and all your entire crew. You mentioned that a number of your folks had not seen this kind of wildfires before. Can we anticipate seeing some requests coming in for funding, training that would go along with better supporting your fire crews for these kinds of emergencies moving forward?
Yeah, so they've actually gotten a pretty good amount of this training. They all go through the State Fire Academy. So the issue isn't so much training. You know, I can have a pile of certificates, but until I go out and do a thing, it's just not the same, right? You put out a bale of hay in the burned building at the fire academy and you got the mechanics down to drag in a hose and get in position and communicating with your crew and coordinating ventilation with fire attack, search and rescue and all those things. Same is true for the wildland firefighting aspect of it. But until you're out there in the dirt and the heat and see what it really does, it's a different animal. No different than a kid's first fire and a real house fire. And they go, wow, it's definitely a lot hotter in here than it was in a burned building. This is a different animal and it'll chase you. So, you know, it's just a matter of time on the job and experience. And these things, you know, we're cycling. I haven't seen one like this since I've been here and I've been here 10 years, right? And so, you know, I've got deputies that have thirty years on the job, more than thirty years on the job. Captains are like, yeah, we've had several of these things and, you know, this is just how it goes and this is what we do. Which was awesome that they were there to kind of impart all of their knowledge and wisdom on the up and coming generation, if you will. So as much as I, you know, as much as I said that, hey, they've never seen it before, that doesn't mean that they can't handle it. It's just different. You know, when you're up there and you go, wow, is it always like this? And the captain goes, yeah, it's fine, kid. We got this and this is what we do, right? So it's, yeah, but yeah, there's definitely, there's always room for improvement and training for sure. On the wildland side, it's difficult to get that kind of training. I mean, we really, we struggle to get the training that we need from the fire academy for the day-to-day stuff beyond this kind of specialized stuff. But certainly, once state forestry gets to catch their breath, because our guy, Andy Regan, has, I don't think he's been at home in his bed in probably a month and a half. He's spending all his time in Sawgus right now and dealing with that fire. So I run into him because we had a deployment from our county to go support the Sawgus fire over there at Breakhart. So they definitely got their hands full this summer, which is, you know, good for them to gain more support in what they do, but bad because they just don't have time to come out and help with anything beyond putting out your fire, right? So we'll catch up with them as soon as they get a chance, but certainly, training is always a good thing.
Thank you, Chief. Council Worthley.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Smith and Assistant Chief Reavis. Appreciate your presentation tonight and the chance for dialogue. And as always, please extend our gratefulness to the whole crew. We're very lucky to have them. We're lucky they trained. We're lucky the neighbors were as good as they were. So this is a lot of positives out of this. So a couple of questions. You had said we're talking about fire roads and I understand that there was a little bit of a delay because we had to wait for someone from the state, the state forestry department, maybe come down to remove some boulders. Is that an accurate statement?
No, actually, the state forestry's heavy equipment came out to do clearing and create some cuts in there to create better areas for containment. The boulders that you refer to are down on the southerly edge of Sunset, right there at Periwinkle. And so those are the boulders that were in place basically to keep people from trying to four-wheel up that hill, right? In private vehicles. So there was no such obstructions on the Riverview side. So all our vehicles went in from the Riverview side for the forestry vehicles. And the deputy, I don't know, almost immediately, early on in that fire called for TPW to come out with heavy equipment and pull those boulders. So they got out there pretty quick, pulled those boulders out of the way, filled in the holes and then we could traverse up the other side. So he knew as he was bringing in more resources, he wanted to come at this thing from both sides. So he just had to lay the foundation and prep to be able to get them up that way. But yeah, I mean, in a perfect world, we just have pipe gates in place to restrict access. I mean, unfortunately, if you leave a road like that open, you know, a lot of people like to go four-wheeling and four-by-four and there if they can, if it's public property and they can climb it in their truck, they're going to go. So, you know, Mike Hale has got to do all the right things on both sides of public safety, right? Allow and create for our access as well as restrict people from getting to places where they have no business in being, especially in private vehicles like that. So it's, you know, and unfortunately, all of that stuff is expensive. And again, it's one of those rare use cases. So where's your priorities and expense?
Were those boulders on private property or on public property?
No, I believe they were all right at the base of the road on the publicly owned side of Sunset, right in the dirt up there, just kind of set in the dirt. So it's an obstruction to trying to get a vehicle up that side of the road.
So I'm just thinking ahead that maybe we should look at all the places we have access to the woods and the reservoirs and look at swinging gates versus boulders. And I know that costs money and takes time, but it might be something to save some time and make it a little easier to get there. Next question is.
Okay, Council, let's share the floor. So let's see who hasn't spoken yet and then we'll go around again. Councillors, who has not spoken that would like to speak? Okay, I would like to speak. One of the things that I was wondering about is if there was a possibility, when we're having a fire on public land that affects so many people, if there was a way that somehow we could get the fire update just circulated on the city website in terms of Facebook, just so we know what's happening, that there's been a new breakout or new hotspots. Or, you know, on today, we're bringing some helicopters in to do this. Just, I know your focus is out in the woods as it needs to be, but it seems like there were times where it would have been more calming if the neighborhoods just understood where we were at at the given time. And what happens is that some folks are listening to their police and fire scanners and they start posting it. And it's always really helpful for us on the council to see it firsthand with a city logo on it, because that's what we've been trained to share. And it just helps us put our constituents at ease. I mean, I had it on both sides with the folks in Lanesville being affected by the woodland acres, which was huge smoke in Lanesville, all the way to the Rockport. And then feeling the same from the other end. So we're kind of in the middle, just all praying that everybody's safe and, you know, and we're okay. You know, we know a lot of people that live in these neighborhoods. People are struggling with breathing. Some of the smoke was really heavy. So just throwing that out, you don't have to answer that today, Chief. But it was just something that I was thinking would be easy to administer with just the use of what people listen to on the fire scanner, right? And the police and fire radios, so.
Yeah, the difficulty with it is having someone dedicated to posting it, right? That's authorized to do it, that they're available 24/7. So you're talking really something akin to it being in a dispatch center with a supervisor that has the ability to push that data out. And then you have to have governance and city policy that dictates what goes out, how quickly does it go out? You know, obviously, there's a lot of police matters and such that shouldn't go out, right? There's things that they're doing and investigations and so forth that, you know, you don't tip your hand, so to speak. Firefighting, a different animal. I totally agree.
Right.
And it would be awesome for us to provide more timely kind of updates. But most of that stuff, I mean, to be honest, we were chasing that thing so much. That was the absolute last thing on my mind, other than when we were in the neighborhoods, letting folks know what exactly we knew at the time. And for a lot of it, it was the neighborhood that was awesome at letting us know, hey, you're starting to get some more smoke over here and I know you're not here, you're around the corner, but it's over here now. So, you know, they were really, like I've said, you know, they were the eyes and ears, not only on a day-to-day basis out in the woods when folks are doing things out there they shouldn't, that kind of lead to these issues. But even after the fact, when it occurred and it's popping up all over the place and it's such a large geographic area, the neighborhood was a tremendous asset and steering us into where we needed to be. So, yeah, I agree, it would be awesome. Quite frankly, I don't even get all the most timely information that I would like from my deputies that are on duty. And, you know, I start to get on them. I'm like, Depp, you got to let me know that this is going on. He's like, well, would you, you want me to put the fire out or tell you that something's on fire? And I'm not putting it out. And I totally get the argument. So I try to put myself back a step on that and the same kind of, it goes for this. You know, I've said it a million times, we're the worst sized community when it comes to this kind of thing with public safety, because we provide excellent public safety stem to stern, top to bottom, from EMS firefighting, policing, the whole bit, right? But the depth of our bench to fill these kind of smaller roles that when you need them, you need them. And you look around the room and you're like, God, there's nobody left. I mean, I don't have anybody to tag in. So that's the difficulty. If there was a better way to do it, if there was some type of technology that could sort of glean and post, you know, call information, which those exist out there, but then they're posting every single call you go on.
No, that's not what I was looking for. It was just more related to this particular fire in our public space that, you know, of almost twenty acres in our neighborhood. That's it. But I understand.
Yeah, I know. Tough thing. I wish I had the staff to do it, but unfortunately, we put all our rubber on the road, literally.
I understand. It was just an ask. Councilmember, and then I'll go back to Council Worthley.
Chief, I know from your training and experience and exposure to the sort of thing that you must have quite considerable knowledge. But there were some concerns raised and I don't know if your department is the direction to go with them, but in terms of the health impact of persistent smoke in a neighborhood like this, there were a number of people with or without breathing problems or issues that raised an alarm that they were concerned, even in their own homes, by the health impacts of this kind of persistent smoke. And I don't know if you have any advice to shed on that or whether we should really be talking through the administration to the Board of Health, but there was some concern that we were communicating those impacts and trying to make sure that people were educated on proper things that they could do to minimize infiltration of smoke into their homes or to protect themselves from emphysema-like illnesses.
Yeah, I totally understand where you're coming from. I mean, we dealt with the neighborhood, you know, one-on-one, basically. When they would come around and ask, hey, you know, how long do you think this is going to be? This is getting to be, you know, an issue in the house. And we have folks with asthma and, like you said, other respiratory, you know, illnesses that are very sensitive to this kind of thing. You know, they don't smoke in their house. They use heparin filtration because they're trying to avoid that type of thing. Hey, just the allergens alone are bad enough on some of these folks. And you pile this on top, it makes it that much worse. So, yeah, the best place to go, obviously, for any health-related issues is their doctor. You know, first and foremost, the health department may be able to offer some advice. I mean, we don't really have any specific advice we can offer other than if this negatively impacts your health, then you should absolutely leave the area, which I know it sucks to say and it's like, well, that's not a great option. I live here and it's a lot of money to leave my house and go somewhere else, especially if it's an extended period. And those are those things that, you know, if we were in those situations, we would encourage folks to reach out, you know, both to either us or the health department, you know, maybe even the mayor's office and say, hey, you know, we're looking for further assistance. You know, if my folks are so busy, they're not really answering that well enough. The Red Cross would be one source of, you know, resources that would put people up due to fire impacts for several days, but they're not going to do it for much more than a few days. So it gets to be kind of a tough thing to really come up with a really good answer because the extent of the fire and the smoke wasn't so extreme that, you know, insurance companies are going to pick up the bill for you on your homeowners and those other resources. So, I mean, we were kind of in the middle of, will somebody cover this or is this on your own? And for those that, you know, and the folks that I saw that I talked to was like, if it's bad enough, you got to go and you need some help. You don't have someplace to go. Let us know. We'll reach out to Red Cross. And we actually didn't get any of those requests. And I know a lot of that stuff is, you know, when things drag on for days and days or a week and you're like, okay, come on, enough. So I totally get the frustration for those folks. I feel bad for them, but not a lot of great answers.
Well, no, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Council Worthley.
Thank you, Madam President. So there's two debates that are running through my mind on this. One, Ben Franklin said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." And it's actually about fire safety when he coined that phrase ironically. And so I wonder, back to fire roads and prevention, you said it's very expensive. I don't think we've seen the full cost of this fire yet. I mean, we've got three firefighters that are injured and we don't know what that's going to cost in terms of their care and then also overtime to fill their spots. Your men and women are worn down from this. I can't imagine the work that they did and the impact that has on other shifts. You cited about a hundred thousand gallons of water. We're going to hear later about the status of a drought. That's precious. And then back to the fire roads. You know, there was a team of people back in the late 90s, they were called the Watershed Department and it was mainly for Dogtown, where they were a subset of the DPW and they worked relentlessly on building fire roads. And they stopped their work around 1999, 2000 because the job was done. But as you know, trees grow or trees fall and things change topography-wise. And so I'm pleased to see the mayor wants to prioritize that or at least raise a question about what it costs to do that. You had said forty, fifty-three thousand dollars is your assessment so far on this. Do you expect that to be capped there or do you see that number rising as it all plays out?
No, and to your point, the two firefighters that remain injured, you know, while they're off, you know, when impacts are high enough, you know, if there's enough folks out on vacation or illness or whatever else comes on down the line, you know, that'll have its impact for those two folks off the roster. You know, I'm sure once we finally, because we still, literally, we still have hose laid out up on Poles Hill because there's no reason to pull it out when we might have to go back. And it's just way faster to leave it and be able to hit hotspots or anything else that happens. So once we get it all out, get everything all cleaned up, get all the trucks back in order. I mean, everything is back in order to the extent of the hose and equipment that we have available. Shortwood's still up in the woods. So once we get that out, I'm sure there'll be a few more, you know, odds and ends there. But that's about the, that's about the limit of what this is going to be because there's no more extensive operations, right? We're up there on one-off issues and then we just don't have a lot more to pick up to get out of there to assess its condition. And, you know, the hoses that are up there now, I guarantee some of them, we got holes punched in them and they're leaking. But it's like, yeah, okay, it's putting a little water on the ground. We don't care. Get back to work. But we're not going to put that hose back in service on a truck, right? It's got a hole. It's got a leak. It's coming off the line, but for now, it'll do. So those are, you know, minor costs that'll probably. Um, so those are, you know, minor costs that'll probably add into that. But the personnel costs, depending on how long it takes for them to be back, are, are gonna keep adding up. But I mean, it's, this is a kind of a contact sport, as I say, in firefighting, and we typically have people out injured. It just happens to be that three are attributed to this one incident. Um, but it's because it's been a long duration. It's like going to, you know, a couple of house fires a day for a month.
I couldn't do it.
Thank you. Um, it's my turn, Council Worthy. Thank you.
The next time...
So I, I, I do, I do have a question, um, on, um, that maybe Mike Hale could help us with, if he's on the call. Um, Mike, as our Public Works Director, you had given me a little bit of insight early on, when the fire started burning, of some emergency trail clearing that had occurred over the past few years. Um, I was wondering if you could elaborate on some of that, because obviously we can do better, but I think it's helpful for the general public to understand that there has been work that has been maintained with the DPW, with Mayor Tree Service, with CATS. So if you could give us a, um, a, a minute overview of that, it would be really appreciated.
Certainly, Counselor. I, I think the robust fire road clearing is something that hasn't occurred in 25 years. Um, we have addressed, to some degree, um, our loop roads are on our reservoirs and access to our reservoirs, which, you know, that water should land precious to us. Um, fires in that could be very detrimental to the quality of water in the city. Uh, we have done some clearing, um, I would say their request, or maybe the, um, the suggestion of the fire department, um, along Babson's Old Rock Port Road. Um, and the majority of it's been done, you know, just as we need something done, we can address it. Volunteers like KPM Trails, too, have certainly done trail clearing. They've done more than we have, frankly. Um, I'd say that some of the work that we do may be more involved than volunteers can do. Uh, but as far as number of days in the woods of east or west Gloucester, I think volunteers have spent more time than we have. Um, shifting priorities is, is, it's a very difficult thing to, to manage in, in a city, because a manager of a very large department, um, and we don't have the resources that we once had, or priorities have shifted those resources to other places. So I, I, we, we do what we can. Um, I do believe there's more to be done. I mean, it was picked up in the MVP conversation. Uh, we've applied for numerous grants over the years for, um, just this. Um, but again, priorities, even within the state granting authority, um, they go to other things other than maintenance of fire roads. So it's, it's, it's a complicated dance that we have, and I, I hope that, you know, this will be a catalyst for some future change.
Great. I think that's a consensus of how we're feeling, so that's appreciated. Thank you. All right, um, Council Worthy, um, last question. Oh, wait, and Council O'Hara has his hand up, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Council O'Hara first, because he hasn't spoken.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, thank you very much, and thank you to your, to your entire department that you've done. Um, as far as going forward, we still have, unfortunately, um, dry, dry land. Then Gloucester has plenty of, of wooded property. Um, is there anything you can say publicly that the general public can do? You mentioned the assistance that you've gotten in the neighborhoods during the fire, and I'm not so much asking in that perspective, but what can they do to help us hopefully not have another fire uh, in, in another section of, of Gloucester's, uh, many acres of wooded property? Thank you. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I follow you completely, Jamie. So that, I mean, the, first and foremost, folks need to, you know, obviously, when they're in or near any wooded areas, brush areas, uh, and so forth, even in your own yard. I mean, if I dropped a match out in my lawn right now, my whole front yard will burst into flames. I mean, it's, I've never seen it this dry, right? It's like a desert out there. So, you know, people just have to be cognizant of that and careful, right? And, and pay attention to that. I mean, if you're using power equipment, if you're parking a car in the grass because you got a bunch of people over, the catalytic converters get wicked hot, and you park it over a bunch of tall, dark, dry grass, it can start a grass fire. If you live next to the woods and nobody notices it, the grass fire turns into maybe a car fire, or spreads to the woods. Now you got a chunk of the woods on fire right next to your house. So, I mean, these are the, the simple, kind of almost silly things that, that happen, that people don't think about, and they're accidents. That's why they call them accidents. I mean, obviously, we, we feel the one up on Paul's Hill was, was semi-intentional, and again, that's a, that's an issue that the police and the courts are handling. But, um, you know, the, the people that just go out in the woods and decide they wanna have a little cooking fire, or a campfire, or... It, it strikes me as odd, but I run across folks when I'm hiking, but they're smoking and hiking. So they're looking to stay in shape, but they still got a bad habit. Don't throw your cigarette down out in the woods when it's wicked dry, it's just gonna start a fire. So, I mean, it's just a lot of common sense things, uh, that, that people need to do, not only on your own property, but out in the woods, throughout town. Don't flick a cigarette out the window right now, driving down the street. Put it out in your ashtray. It's your cigarette, you keep it, right? I mean, if, we've dealt with, I couldn't tell you how many mulch fires around town in the areas where people stand and congregate and smoke outside of our restaurants and, and different buildings, because they throw a cigarette butt, and oh yeah, the cigarettes are supposed to be self-extinguishing. They're not. I have, I have got news for you, they're not. And we're on mulch fires all the time, just because of that kind of neglect, right? And it's just, and it's easy to do. It's, you know, it's just that dry, and you just have to be that much more careful. And again, like, like I've talked with the mayor and, and Jill about, um, you know, we, we feel pretty strongly that closing the woods is not a good option, because it takes all of our good citizens out of the woods, who are our eyes and ears, and I want them in the woods, right? I want them in the woods to make sure when the people that don't behave in the woods are doing things they shouldn't do, and somebody sees it, and hopefully, early on, so we can get out there and put it out with a water can instead of 100,000 gallons of water that we really don't wanna waste on a dry hill, for no reason, when it, when it's preventable. Again, you know, the predictable, preventable, see, I'm the whole, you know, it's, it's a, a lot of self-responsibility. When it comes to people's homes, you know, pay attention around your homes. If you live in or near the woods, you got a lot of di- dry trees and so forth, you know, try, try to clean it up as best you can, move it away from your home, uh, that type of thing, to where if there is an issue, you don't have fuel, right? Fuel loads stacked up close to your property. Try to give yourself a buffer zone, um, to make it, A, safer for you and easier for us if, if you do get a fire out behind your house in the woods, that we come over and knock it down, get to it pretty easily, and there's not a huge fuel load that's gonna slow us down and allow that thing to extend. So, you know, we, we've been chasing a lot of open fires around town. Obviously, there's prohibition on that, yet we still have people out burning fires. Um, you know, I was coming back from Essex the other day, and Engine Two was out on a call, and someone had a smoldering log in their backyard that, that someone else called in. It's like, really? You, you couldn't put that out last night? A, you weren't supposed to start it at all, and then you walked away and left it kind of smoldering. And it was literally feet from the edge of woods, uh, west Gloucester. Not a great combination. So I just beg of people to, to just be more cautious and careful.
Great. Thank you, Chief. All right, Council Worthy, last question, and then we're ready for the next order of business.
Thanks. I, um, I had asked for this report, asked the Council President for this report two weeks ago, and, um, I think you were away. I consider this the number one issue in the city right now, and I don't know what's on our agenda that's more important than this, but I will try to ask one question of my seven or eight. But I think the public wants to know and deserves to know a few of the things that we're asking, and I think you do an excellent job, Mr. Chief Smith. So, um, I just, I don't know how to summarize this in one question. I'd like to ask a few questions, Madam Chief.
I'd like you to just ask one question, Counselor, because we have to get on to the next order of business.
If any of the councils want to yield their time, I certainly appreciate that. Um, so you'd said that this fire was started by someone in the woods. You said intentionally. I don't think you mean arson, you mean someone who started a fire, knowingly starting a fire. What kind of fires, this is for everyone on the call, everyone in the meeting here, and I hope everyone tells someone else the answer to this, too. What kind of fires are allowed in the woods?
Yeah, in the, in the public woods, none.
None. During a drought, or during wet season, or, or any time?
Ever. Anytime. They're not permitted.
So if we know of someone, or see someone, or if someone else tells us about someone who's in the woods with a fire, what do we do?
Yeah, that should definitely get reported. Um, you know, the simplest call is to get ahold of our dispatch center, either calling 911, if that's the simplest, or the business line to the police department, they get through the dispatchers. I mean, obviously, if it's a contained fire and there's no emergency, per se, just behavior that is not appropriate, that needs to be reported and managed, um, then that would fall back really more to law enforcement, and we'd go up to support them, because, hey, we're the guys that put out the fires, and we have the extinguishers to do it. Uh, but when it comes to the violations of law and, and those kind of public conduct issues, uh, that, that's for them to manage. So it'd just be a team effort to go up there and square people away on, hey, this is not allowed, you should not be doing that, we're putting the fire out, and that's the end of that.
And is that the same thing with fireworks? Other than approved fireworks, if we hear fireworks or see fireworks, what do we do?
Yeah, fireworks are absolutely illegal in, in Massachusetts. I mean, even some of those little snap-and-pop things that you can buy in the box, if they have more than the certain gram limit, those are illegal. Sparklers are illegal, right? They burn hot. You drop one of those wires in, in, in an area like we have now, and, and you got a big fire going. So, you know, we're, we're sort of the fun police, I suppose, to some. Uh, like, you know, this, this is sort of an example of, of why that is, right? We, we just dropped $53,000 out of my budget and counting, because somebody had a fire out in the woods, and, and they weren't supposed to, and it's just that simple.
And chances are, we're not recouping that $53,000 from the person who...
No. No, and I got three peop- and I got three people that are hurt that shouldn't have been hurt, that didn't need to be up in the woods, wouldn't have been in the woods if this never had become, right?
Counselor, I'll ask you, I'll allow you to ask, um, another question, as long as there's no objection from other counselors. So, go ahead.
I object. Okay. We've been on this for over 45 minutes now, uh, Council, um, Madam President. And, uh, there's some good questions there, but we could be here all night long, and we've got other people waiting to, uh, to, uh, to give us some information. And thanks to the chief for his excellent review of this, but maybe it's time to move on.
We can move on.
Okay. I think, uh, Council Worthy agrees, so, um, thank you so much, Chief, Assistant Chief. Totally appreciate everything that you've done for our community, for public safety, for our first responders. Um, you've been amazing, and, you know, it seems like there are some action items that we'll get our arms around, we'll look at, we'll look at grants, we'll look at opportunities for, for budgeting for next year. Um, and, um, and, and I think, um, I think this has been a great conversation. So thank you for attending, and counselors, if you have follow-up questions that you'd like to ask, um, please submit them, and, um, we'll get them answered. I think we could, we could certainly be on this call for a long time. Um, so thank you both.
Yes, no problem. All right, you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council Nolan. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
I, I just wanted to know if you recognize that Pam Toby is on the call.
Oh, Pam Toby is on the call. Welcome, Pam. It's great to see you back, uh, listening, and, and, um, awesome. Can't wait to meet your little one. Um, and also, I'd just like to recognize that, um, Council Majota won't be on the call tonight. Okay, um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is another presentation, and we have Ryan Marks, City Engineer, and Dana Martin, Environmental Engineer, on the FDO, on the drought conditions, but I don't see Ryan Marks here, so I think Mike Hale might be taking over the presentation.
Okay. Um, so Dana, would you introduce yourself? And then, um, and also, um, Mike Hale, if you wanna put yourself on video, that would be great, and, um, we look forward to hearing this report. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. I'm Dana Martin. I'm the Environmental Engineer with the Engineering Department, uh, part of our Public Works Department under Mike Hale. Um, my responsibilities include participation in the oversight of our drinking water and wastewater facilities. As you all are probably aware, uh, Massachusetts has a drought task force that has, um, they declared drought status in the entire state of Massachusetts right now. Currently, the northeast region, of which Gloucester is a part of, is in a Level 3 critical drought. Um, and as part of that drought, we've enacted water use restrictions, the latest of which began on August 2nd. Um, it limits outdoor water use to handheld watering. That's watering by a hose or watering can after the hours of 5:00 PM, or before hours of 9:00 AM, and prohibiting, um, watering by traditional irrigation or sprinklers, um, and prohibit some other water use. We've seen a great reduction in water use as a result of these restrictions, so we're really happy. They've been successful. Um, we've been able to recover some of our water. Um, that being said, our capacity is lower than normal. Um, luckily, we got some rain last night. Uh, we're hoping that with some continued rain, we see some recharge of our reservoirs, and, um, our water use demand always drops off significantly after Labor Day. So, um, it's, it's good timing, and we're feeling optimistic with the resources we've got.
That's, um, that's helpful to hear. Um, Mike Hale, do you have anything else, else to add to this? Can you give us a feel for the specific reservoirs, or things that you think would be helpful for us to know?
As you know, Counselor, we either pull out of the east system or the west system, um, depending on supply, and both suppliers are down significantly, um, where we'd like them to be heading into the fall. Certainly, heading into the fall is beneficial to us, as Dana mentioned, our water consumption or water use citywide drops off dramatically. Um, and it continues to drop off, you know, through the course of the fall. Uh, we, you know, probably use, I'm not sure we use quite half as much in December as we do in July, but pretty close to it. Um, you know, there's little we can do about this current drought situation. You know, we manage our reservoir levels well. We manage, uh, we have leak detection that goes on, it's ongoing daily. Uh, we have, obviously, uh, water use restrictions in place. Uh, it, it's up to each individual person to, um, make sure that they are playing their part in this. Uh, at Public Works, we have calls frequently that people are still using automated irrigation to water their lawns. Um, if your neighbor's lawn is green and they're not in a well, they're probably violating the, um, water restrictions. There is no green grass right now, um, anywhere. I mean, you look at the Rotary, you look at the Boulevard, you look at our parks, um, you know, all grasses are in a state of, um, it's all dormant at this point, waiting for some, um, better precipitation. The little bit the way yesterday certainly helped. Um, I think we're fortunate that our watersheds rebound quickly. Certainly, the east system a little bit faster than the west system. Um, but again, as Chief alluded to at the very beginning of this, you know, dry ground is, is, is difficult, because the water sheet flows off of it, and that could create some other issues. But, um, we're hopeful, um, whether it's cyclical, and hopefully we get back into a more, um, traditional precipitation pattern.
Thank you. Um, Jill Cahill, do you have anything to add before we open this up for council questions? Okay. Um, counselors, this is your opportunity to ask questions of Dana and Mike on the drought and water restrictions. Obviously, we can't really discuss enforcement, but, um, our CAO can, can maybe discuss that if anybody asks a question regarding that. Um, so who would like to open up the, the questions? Um, Council Gross.
Hello, uh, thank you. Um, just a suggestion is maybe at the, uh, the sign at the Rotary that we flash that you, uh, doesn't even necessarily have to be real, but you can say, uh, Water Enforcement Hotline Report Number, and just put up a 555 number, and, uh, maybe it'll catch some people's attention. But also... But also, and this is somewhat related, unrelated, my brother-in-law, the former council president, Paul Lundberg, was telling me an interesting story about, he phrased it as great customer service. And one of his toilets had been running and he was, you know, not paying much attention to it. And he got a letter from the DPW and telling him that his water usage had risen significantly. Could you please, please check his, you know, his apparatus that are in his house? And I think that that's, you know, something that goes unrecognized that of what you guys do as part of our water conservation efforts. And he called DPW and he talked to Robin, who then walked him through a partial rebate. He was extremely thankful and complimentary over the great customer service that he got. But also, as you talked, Mike, about the new water meters, you'll be able to find that stuff out in real time, I think is what you said. And that would also help us save an awful lot of water that we lose, or at least get paid for it. So, anyway, I just wanted to pass that along.
Great. That's great. Who else would like to ask a question? Counsel Worthy.
Be very concise. Thank you, Dana. Nice meeting you. Appreciate the work that you do. And thank you, Mike, for being here with us again tonight on this. So, every spring, we lose water out of Babson Reservoir. It flows behind Poplar Park, underground through drains to the Mill Pond. We purposefully drain Goose Cove Reservoir out to Goose Cove, freshwater lost to saltwater every single year. Now, I know it's because in the spring, they're overflowing. Yet, we do have other places to store water, Dykes Meadow specifically. And I wrote repeatedly about this 20 years ago, is there a way for us to capture the water in the spring that we lose into the ocean for us to use later in the summer?
Mike Hale, I'm sure you know the answer.
I'll start with this, Dana. You can jump in. Typically, when the East System's full from spring rain, so is the West System's full from spring rain or runoff. We can move water from Babson to Goose Cove and Goose Cove to Babson. We can move water from Haskell's to Dyke and Dykes to Haskell. No, we can't move Dyke to Haskell, move from Haskell's to Dyke. We can manage water at Wallace that comes from Fernwood, and we're learning more about how that system works. Fernwood doesn't have any supply to speak of, but it's a constant flow of water that can be diverted to Wallace. When we're full, we're full. I think that's kind of the long and short of it. Other than raising our reservoir levels to capture more, I think we're pretty much capped out right now. And the last reservoir raising we had was Dykes in the early 1980s. But not much more can be done at this point to salvage that water that does spill. We recognize that, you know, there are times when water needs to be shifted from one to the next, either in East or the West. We have no ability to transfer raw water from East to West or West to East. Raw water, meaning the reservoir that's just in the, that's water that's in the reservoir that has yet to be treated. We do not have that, those mechanisms in place.
Thank you.
Follow-up question.
Go ahead, Counsel Worthy, with your follow-up question.
So, first, thank you for that. The Dykes Meadow Reservoir can hold 705 million gallons of water, which is significantly higher than Babson and Goose Cove. So, I don't know that they're completely filled evenly. I know you draw off of different ones based on capacity. But just to be clear, there's no way to get water from Babson to Goose Cove over to Dykes Meadow?
That is correct.
Unless it were treated water, which is not allowed by the EPA.
We couldn't even, we couldn't even put treated water back in those reservoirs. It's not kind of how the system flows, the water flows in the reservoirs to the filtration plants, then pumped out to the distribution system. There's no means in place currently to take from the Clearwell the finished water to pump, nor would we ever back to the reservoir. It's like, it'd be the equivalent of taking tap water to put in your rain barrel. It just wouldn't make any sense to do so.
Unless you need that water later. First, I don't know the EPA will allow us, but you could certainly run a hose from a hydrant to Dykes if you needed to. I had proposed some.
Counsel Worthy, we can't hear you. So, I'm going to call on Counsel Grow and then Counsel O'Hara, and then Counsel Nolan.
Just very quickly, thank you for the presentation, as Martin and Mike. You said we're significantly lower than we would like to be going into the spring. Obviously, I think most people recognize that. Where are we in terms of actual percentage in the reservoirs? And, you know, there's a lot of people who are running around suggesting that this is more proof that we shouldn't allow any more building on Cape Ann and we shouldn't have any more residents moving in. We're not in danger of running out of water, are we? He asks with.
Okay, if you wanted to share the current reservoir readings, as of probably, I'm not sure if you have this week's yet, but.
I do.
Okay, excellent.
I have Mondays, and I can share my screen if I have a little visual, if that works for folks.
That would be great. Joanne, could you allow Dana to share her screen? Awesome.
Okay. So, reservoir levels were taken on Monday of this week. So, Mike did a good job setting this up for folks' understanding. We've got really two systems in Gloucester. We've got two water treatment plants. We've got the East System and the West System. We are currently using our West System. So, that means any, you know, you can see in the East System, we're at 68%, 62%. We're down strictly because of the drought. The West System, we're at 54%, you know, 52% in Dykes. And overall, system-wide, East and West, we're at 54% of our total water capacity. Again, these values were determined on Monday morning before the little bit of rain we got yesterday. We are not, you know, we've got plenty. If we got no rain, we'd have a couple more months of water supply. So, we expect with rain and the usage dropping off, the typical recharge in the fall, winter, and spring will be, will be in decent shape.
Quick follow-up to that?
Sure.
Right now, we were only experiencing sort of nominal restrictions in terms of what we do with hosepipes outdoors in our lawns and our gardens and whatnot. We're not even at the point yet that we were instituting further restrictions, you know, and asking people to do greater, I forgot the word, I'm losing the word here, but managing their own personal water use inside their home, things like that. Are we at a point where we're asking for or thinking about asking for further restrictions on the water use? Or are we confident that we're going to be able to make it into the fall without more draconian efforts?
The current restrictions are in place through the end of the month, which is another week. We'll certainly be reevaluating at that point in time. I could see us continuing the current restrictions. You know, we could have done a complete and total outdoor watering ban, or like you've said, emergency only. But I don't think it will come to that. We'll definitely reevaluate restrictions at the end of the month.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can take down your screen share, but thank you, Dana. That was really helpful to see that. Appreciate it. Other questions, counselors? I know that Counsel O'Hara, I think you were next. Go ahead.
Thank you. And this is for Dana or Mike, and it's relative to what Counselor Grow had just mentioned and actually the information on the screen. I don't know if, again, either Dana or Mike, the, I saw the number was, we're at 54% East-West. Where would that compare to, say, a year ago, two years ago? I know that's a general question. Dana had mentioned that, you know, we have, we have, you know, two more months or a couple more months of water remaining. As we know, out west, they've been experiencing drought for over a year and they're down to record levels as everyone reads about. So, just in general, where are we? We're at 54% capacity right now, or that's what I saw on the screen. Where would we have been, say, a year ago, two years ago? Thank you.
We've fluctuated in the 60% and 70% range, maybe in the last 10 years. We've certainly seen level, capacity levels this low. If you look back the past 20, 30 years, we've seen lower levels than what we're currently at, but we're certainly lower this year than we have been. Like I said, you know, 60, 70% range is more typical this time of year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any counselors that have not spoken yet? So, I will ask a question to our CAO. That's okay. Jill, help us understand the enforcement of the drought and how that works. I know that there have been some letters, some calls made to folks that are violating it. But just give us a flavor for that, because all of us get calls from our constituents regularly. We tell them to call the police. But it's annoying when people see irrigation systems and sprinklers going on. People might not be even living at that house. Their grass is gorgeous and everyone else is really doing their part to obey. So, could you just give us a feel for that?
Sure. Yes, if people, number one, people should call the other police. So, the mayor signed an emergency order, you know, for the fire ban, which then gives the police the power to enforce it. The hard part here, and I'm not sure what the word, I can't think of the word that, I can't think of the word that the chief uses, the police chief uses, but it is obviously difficult to enforce because typically, they get a call by the time they show up, the water's not on, right? So, but they will still, we've been making calls and sending letters and stopping by. It's mostly a public information campaign, because it's really hard to catch someone in the midst of watering their lawn. But we definitely appreciate neighbors who share information with us. I always encourage, I mean, we are neighbors, right? We're a community. So, you know, in my neighborhood, I'll talk to my neighbors. I think that's an important thing. Some people don't follow, you know, city business the way we on this call do. So, they, some people may not know. So, that's, so that's the purpose of the signs, the signs at the Rotary and on the Boulevard. And we will, you know, once we reevaluate it, we'll do another call. Dana has sent us some good images to help put some more information out there. But it is difficult to enforce. We truly understand people's frustration with it. But that's the best we can do is please, you know, give the police a call. Obviously, their first and foremost business is public safety, but we are trying to stay on top of this as best we can, you know. If there's, particularly if you see big properties, you know, Counsel O'Hara, we'd work with him on one. It's important for us to know about them, so.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Any other questions from counselors? Counsel Worthy.
Thank you. I apologize if my camera or my video went down. I'll be very brief. The first question was asking about, is there water that we lose? Well, we have a way of capturing it yet. Is there water we lose in the spring from Goose Cove and Babson?
Counsel, you're very faint. I'm sorry. I think, I'm not sure if it's my volume or yours. Is there water in the spring that, what?
Do we lose water in the spring, whether we have a way of capturing it or not yet? The first question is, do we lose water in the spring?
We lose water when we have, when we reach our capacity in all of our reservoirs. All of our reservoirs spill, every single one of them. And that could be the fall, it could be the spring, sometimes even the summer. Rarely, but sometimes it has been in the past. It's when we reach capacity for storage, it has no place to go. Like I said, we can't shift from East to West, and the movement between East and East and West and West is limited, but it's frequently done.
I'm going to move on from this. The last question I have is, earlier this year, you had asked the council to fund a program, which I think Counsel Gross was referring to, where we can see if there is significant use or leaks or things like that. Can we monitor first whether the restrictions are actually reducing our water usage totally? And then can we use that data? And I don't want to be sort of Big Brother watching, but if we can't get police there when someone's watering us, Mr. Cahill said, can we track that simply from, okay, we instituted a water ban, the city's total use drops, but this individual's use didn't change one bit? Can we use that as enough data to say we need to have a conversation at least with the people who are using water excessively?
So, part of our remote collection system is in place today. We've been able to identify, you know, the traditional leaky toilet or something else, and a letter is sent to the property on that. Could we enforce water restrictions with this? I don't believe we could. I think what it comes down to is if Counsel Gross is using more water than Counsel O'Neill, which happens to be my screen on my left here, I don't know if Counsel Gross is just using more water. I wouldn't know what he's using it for. All we're seeing is a total volume consumed in the water meter readings. I would have no idea what it's being used for. And unless it's outdoor watering, he's allowed to use that water. So, if he's a frequent flusher or a frequent hand washer, or does lots of laundry and dishes, I don't know if I could ever comfortably send the police to his door and knock on his door for something like that.
I was suggesting police is the first step, but I appreciate what you're saying.
The Anna Squam Watch might come find Tony, so.
But do we have a way of seeing if the water restrictions actually have an impact? Are you able to say cumulatively, this goes in on August 1st and water consumption drops?
Certainly. And we're seeing that currently right now, and Dana can elaborate if she needs to. We are certainly seeing a decrease in water consumption citywide right now. It's not just, you know, the end of the summer, because we're still kind of in the heat of the summer, so to speak. We're seeing it because people are heeding the restrictions.
Yeah, we're also seeing it in our operational hours. You know, our staff are working 24-hour shifts up until the water ban, and then, you know, they're able to shut down for a couple hours a night, most nights now.
Awesome. Counsel Grow, I saw that you had your hand raised.
I just want to know how often Tony showers. Can you please just let that, settle that one for us tonight?
More than you.
I wanted to know if he does the dishes every night.
Absolutely. Frequent flushing.
Well, we know Paul Lundberg has a problem with his toilet. I'm sorry, just.
I apologize. I apologize. Want to let them go.
Any other questions, counselors? I think we've certainly asked a lot of questions on the drought and the water ban. So, seeing none. Dana and Mike, thank you for being here, and Jill as well. Really helpful to hear this. And I'm sure a lot of members of the public will listen to the Zoom call tomorrow. And at one point, we had 20 attendees on the phone. Right now, we have 16. So, thank you for joining us and for providing the community in the city council with a lot of information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, counselors.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
Thank you so much. So, I'll turn the meeting over to our ONA Chair and our Vice Chair. Thank you so much. I'll turn the meeting over to our O N A Chair and our Vice Chair, Sean Nolan.
Thank you, Council President. First up for the Community of the Arts, we have Judith Hoglander. Is Judith with us tonight?
I am.
Hi Judith, how you doing? I see our C A O Jill Cahill has a hand up, so I will jump to her for one second.
And I'll be quick. Thank you so much, Counselor. And thank you, Judith. I just wanted to, the mayor asked me to just jump in quick. One, of course, thank all the volunteers who have stepped up to the plate. I'm going to give a little special shout out to Judith, because this is her, I don't know how many round, where she's raised her hand for the Committee for the Arts. So thank you, Judith. The Committee for the Arts in particular, anyone who followed it towards the end of last, the last administration, the committee had essentially fallen apart and pretty much everyone had resigned. We have since coming into office come across a few things that by ordinance should go through the Committee for the Arts and did not. So the mayor reached out to these incredible volunteers on this call, and you'll probably know all their names. They are the, some of the arts rock stars here on Cape Town. And so we're trying to put it back up together, put it back together. We've got a couple of things, some art installations that should have gone through that have not, so that's the goal behind this. You'll also see some changes in the ordinance come from our General Counsel, just to make sure that the ordinance related to the Committee for the Arts. So I just want to preface that. So you'll see, you'll see a large number of those. I think they're peppering in. And we're looking forward to having them back up and running and part of our administration. And thank you to all the volunteers.
Excellent. Thank you, Jill. So Judith, how you doing tonight?
I'm well. How about you?
I'm doing well. I'm happy to see you back.
Thank you.
Familiar with the council and the rest of the city. If you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself, that'd be wonderful.
Well, very good. Well, I've, I've been a member of the Committee for the Arts for a long time. I started out my interest in the arts as a, as an opera singer. And when the voice went, I turned my voice toward advocating for the arts. And I've been serving the arts in various capacities throughout the community over the years and, but have served on the Committee for the Arts and am really energized by the group that has been gathered to become the new Committee for the Arts. I think that you will be hearing a lot more from this committee. The city deserves this kind of committee and it's, it's, it's really going to be great, I think.
Excellent. Thank you, Judith. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Grow.
I just want to, I want to, I will do this in a wholesale, thank you, but especially to Judith and her commitment to Gloucester and the arts in Gloucester. Also Karen Ristabin, Rebecca Reynolds and Miranda Aisling. I'm not familiar with Miranda as much. But in a community that is so wrapped up in the arts, this committee is so essential to making sure that arts and the, and the display and creation of public art especially is, is really supported and, and, and has a committee that is, is going to be thoughtful and, and attentive to the needs of our community and in supporting the various arts that we have going on in this community. So I thank you for your longstanding commitment to this and to sticking it out. I know it's not always easy, but I do appreciate each and every one of you, and I think this is one of those committees that I think a lot of people don't think much about, but is a tremendous asset to our community. I thank you for, for stepping up.
Thank you, Jason.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes, I just want to say, I've known Judith for about thirty years, and I just want to correct her for a second. You said you've been doing this for a few years. It's been a few decades. I thank you so much. Please say hi to Harry. I know he's supportive of you doing this too. And you make a difference every time you volunteer. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said, Judith, I do want to say that we do miss you in Magnolia.
I miss Magnolia as well.
Know that you did beautiful garage that leaned to the left. And it was always a pleasure seeing your family around. So with that, I have a motion. And on a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Judith Hoglander to the Committee of the Arts, term to expire two fourteen, two thousand twenty-four, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Majota is absent. Counsel Memard.
Enthusiastically, yes, and thank you, Judith.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, and thank you, Judith.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Thank you, Judith. Counselor Gross.
Yes, and thank you, Judith.
Counsel Grow.
Absolutely.
Eight in favor, one absent. Welcome back, Judith. Appreciate your volunteerism. Next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
We, again, we have for the Committee for the Arts, we have Karen Ristabin. Karen, how you doing tonight?
Good. How are you?
You're doing wonderful. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be in the Committee for the Arts again.
Sure. I am the, work for Essex County Community Foundation, and I manage a countywide investment in arts and culture for them called the Creative County Initiative. I'm in year five of that position. And we're investing in arts and culture all over Essex County, including working with all of the municipal leaders, planners and other municipal leaders across the county. So I really believe strongly in the intersection of arts and municipal and civic life. And I was the director, the president of the Rocky Neck Art Colony for ten years, taught art in public high school for ten years. And I play music and occasionally do visual art practice as well. And that's, you know, that's a little synopsis. I came through all of that after a twenty-year law left turn that I took and as, as I had a law practice for twenty years, then came back to the arts where I had started many years ago. So I very, very strongly believe in this kind of work and happy to be volunteering for, for this period.
Excellent. Thank you, Karen. We really appreciate you stepping up. You're certainly well versed in this area of the arts. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Grow.
I said I would make my original statement, but I just have to say that is a rock star avatar photo you have. I just wanted to point that out.
Who took the photo?
I don't know. There's no credit.
With that being said, a recent report. On a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Karen Ristabin to the Committee for the Arts, term to expire February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counselor Majota is absent. Counsel Memard.
Vera and I give Karen an enthusiastic yes. Thank you.
We heard, yeah. Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely, Karen. Thank you.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Gratefully, yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes, thank you, Karen.
Counsel Grow.
With pleasure, yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
Another member for the Committee for the Arts, we have Miranda Aisling, term to expire two fourteen, two thousand twenty-five. Miranda, are you available tonight?
Yes, I am. Hello.
How you doing tonight, Miranda?
Good. How are you?
Wonderful. If you just tell the committee a little bit about yourself, that'd be excellent.
Sure. I don't have quite nearly the, the resume as either Judith or Karen, but I moved to Cape Town about two years ago now as an artist in residence at the Manship Arts Retreat Studios. And since then have been fully sucked into Gloucester. I'm now a full-time resident and the head of education and engagement at the Cape Town Museum, where I've been for a year and a half. I'm also a practicing interdisciplinary artist, including visual art, pottery and music. And I've become the Chair of the Diversity and Equity Committee for the Gloucester Four Hundred Plus Committee.
Excellent. Sounds like you've really taken up roots. I hope you enjoy Gloucester as much as we do.
Thank you. Yeah, it's going quite well so far.
Excellent. Glad to have you. Is there any questions or comments from the council? All right, here are none. We'll move on to the motion. On a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint Rebecca Reynolds, Miranda Aisling to the Committee for the Arts, term to expire two fourteen, twenty-five. Sorry about that, Miranda.
Not sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Majota is absent. Counsel Memard.
Hi, Miranda, and yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely, thank you.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes, and welcome.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes, and welcome.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Welcome, Miranda.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, is Rebecca Reynolds not on the call?
She was earlier on the call, and I don't see her on the call anymore.
Okay, next order of business.
Next order of business would be for the Council on Aging with Stephen M. Iello. Steve, how are you doing tonight?
Good evening.
Hello, Steve. How you doing?
Good. How you doing?
You're doing well. Pretty sure the entire council in the city knows you. What if you could just give a brief description of why you'd like to be on the Council of Aging?
Sure. As you know, just over a year ago, I retired from the fire department after thirty-six years. While I was on the fire department, I was the liaison to the Council on Aging. I was a member of the Triad Committee. And we did a lot of public education for the Council on Aging, fall prevention, carbon monoxide detector, installation, things to that nature. I've also worked at Brooksbury Village as an emergency medical officer at taking care of the geriatric population there. And I'll be sixty years old next month, so I guess the Council on Aging is kind of a, a good fit on me because I'm aging. But I think I have a little bit to offer after retirement. I, I feel as though I still want to give back to the community and, and hopefully make the community a better place, as I think is all of our goals.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. And I would say that you're aging gracefully, because you're still sixty years young.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from the council for Steve? Counsel Worthy.
I have questions, but I'd like to just make a few comments. If that's okay. Steve, you've gone above and beyond in every job you've held, and you continue to do that. As a firefighter, you obviously got paid to do that, but you went above and beyond there and in involvement in the community, and I just love seeing that you continue to do that. So I have high expectations for what you will do to help the Council on Aging. I thank you.
Oh, thank you for the kind words.
You've earned them.
Excellent. Thank you. Steve, I've known you for about forty years now and pretty much support all your efforts, and thank you for everything you've done for the community and as a friend. So without further, I'd like to move on to the motion. On a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the council, city council appoint Stephen M. Iello to the Council on Aging, term to expire two fourteen, twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there a discussion, counselors? So I would just like to say that as a member of the Council on Aging Board, as a ex officio member representing the City Council, I think Steve will be a great addition. He knows a lot about our city and has a lot of connections, and it's a very active board. Meet every month, but there's total volunteerism. And one of your old colleagues, Barry McKay, is on our board, as I'm sure you know. And so I'm looking forward to having you join us. So I will be supporting your appointment. Thank you. Anyone else like to add to the discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Counsel Majota is absent. Counsel Memard.
Yes, and thanks, Steve.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely. Thanks, Steve.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Counsel Worthy.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Counsel Grow.
Yes, thank you.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business. Counsel Nolan.
We'll move on to the Gloucester Cultural Council with John Hicks. John Hicks, how you doing tonight?
Doing very well. Thank you, Sam.
Excellent. Thank you for coming. If you could just talk to the council for a little bit about why you want to be on the cultural council, that'd be excellent.
Well, I'm always been a supporter of the art in many, many ways. I, I was in the Cape Town Repertory Theater back in the seventies, which was a federally funded theater program here in Gloucester. I've done a lot of work in theater and music in the schools. I'm currently working with elementary school band camps at the Gloucester school system. And in the last week, in the last week, I played a gig with the famous Karen Ristabin. I was at the Harbor Loop Concerts performing. I played at the Rockport Acoustic Fest and and there's probably more, but I can't remember. I'm very connected in the musical community, the theater community. We just played the High School Musical, Gloucester Hone. I've been playing high school, well, I've been playing musicals for forty-five years. The first one I played was on Broadway, but I've played a lot of school musicals, worked in the school departments, doing musicals in Rockport, Gloucester, Ipswich, Salem. So very connected. And I think the plan, I was recruited by Tom Stein, who just left for China, who left the cultural community because he was off to take a teaching job over there. But he was looking for people in the musical community to really get the word out that there were grants available, that we really wanted to promote Gloucester as a place that was big in all the arts, in theater, in painting, in music, and really trying to get roots into the musical community. So that's sort of why I was tapped, and I'm very glad to have been so recruited.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Is there any counselor questions or comments? Counsel Worthy.
May, John, I just want to thank you. I play music. My son is only at school, so I'll make sure that he looks out for you to learn something from you.
Carlos, his, his band director, the band director there is phenomenal.
Right, and my son is enjoying that.
Very talented people teaching music in Gloucester schools.
I don't think people realize how hard musicals are. You know, we listen to it under the stage in a pit and practicing for months. It's a lot of work, so I give you a lot of credit, and I think you'd be a great asset to the cultural council.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Worthy. With that being said, I'll read the motion. On a motion by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council appoint John Hicks to the Gloucester Cultural Council, term to expire February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Absolutely. Thank you, John.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent.
And one dog.
And, oh my gosh.
Barking approval.
One sweet dog. Congratulations, John. Um, so the only thing I want to ask Council Nolan is if we are in a position to take up Rebecca Reynolds' appointment. Um, she was here for about an hour and a half. Um.
I, I hate you. I have no problem reading Rebecca Reynolds. Um, I believe that she's very active in the area and uh, with the Committee of the Arts. It's a, I don't want to hold them up on an appointment um, that she's applied for and she has been uh, sworn in and I believe she has taken an oath to correct you on. And she may be having um, difficulties tonight, but she was here earlier. So I have no problem reading the motion uh, without any objection.
Great. Looks like without objection. Thank you.
Excellent. So on a motion by Council O'Hara, seconded by Council Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council appoint Rebecca Reynolds, term to expire two fourteen twenty-three for the Committee of the Arts. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion, counselors?
I would just, I would just say that I I've known Rebecca a long time when I was uh, at the library board and we were consulting her in in connection with sculpture projects and that she's, she's done a wonderful job of uh, bringing the Manship Studio of project up in Lanesville uh, into a a wonderful lively place and she's an active member of the arts community.
Great. And I would like to piggyback on Council Member's uh, comment. I was actually on the board of Manship for the first two years and worked really closely with Rebecca. And she's just a great leader and she's so passionate to everything that she does. So I think she'll be a great addition um, to the Committee for the Arts. I can't think of a, a better match. So it's really awesome. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you, Council Nolan and uh, Jill Cahill for staying on the call as you are the one that um, is part of their appointment. So thank you. Um, so next order of business, Madam Clerk.
It's the consent agenda.
Thank you. Our counselors, would anyone wish to pull any matter off the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, which is August twenty-third? Seeing none, is there a motion to move the consent agenda as noted?
Don't move.
Second. Council Worthley uh, made the motion and Council Member seconded it. Um, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council Hera.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the unanimous consent agenda.
Okay, I would like to take the matter off the consent agenda just for the purpose of explaining it to the public and then we'll put it back on and vote it. Hopefully. Um, so the unanimous consent agenda can be found on our, on our city council website under uh, agenda and packets for tonight. And um, specifically, I asked that the MBTA questions that were submitted to Mayor Verga on September twenty, oh, sorry, on July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two regarding the MBTA update on Washington Street train crossing gates um, be distributed, available to the public, our council. Um, and um, and if you, if you have the time to look through it and you're interested, um, it begins with um, a message from me to um, or from, from Joanne, who compiled all the questions from counselors um, to um, to Mayor Verga and basically summarizes the information. There were ten questions that were submitted to Mayor Verga on July twenty-ninth that were from Steve Ayello. There were four that were submitted by me. There was one that was submitted by Bob Ryan. And basically, these questions really represent the totality of all the things that we had heard from members of the public. And I think that was helpful. And I just wanted to also let you know that as an attachment to this was Council Worth, Worth, Worthley's um, summary of his Facebook um, history of what he learned. Um, so we included that in the packet, which we felt was helpful. And also, we included Steve Ayello's information about the specific incident that his wife and son experienced in their car. And then included in that were the questions that he submitted, which we added to the list of questions. Also, Bob Ryan, one suggestion is the traffic commission. So anyway, so there's really nothing else to explain. This is for information only. Just because we felt it was transparent to make sure that we were sharing this with members of the public. Um, so it's there. Please look at it. So at this point, I'd like to put this back on the unanimous consent agenda. And um, and I move to support the unanimous consent agenda as noted.
Seconded.
Um, motion made by Gilman, seconded by Council Nolan. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Budget and Standing, um, Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of August eighteenth.
Great. And I'll um, ask Council Member to walk us through the meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, there are four items for your, for your consideration from Budget and Finance this evening from our August eighteenth meeting. Uh, the first relates to a memorandum from the library director uh, requesting acceptance of a fiscal year twenty twenty-three LSTA grant award, anytime STEM learning grant in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. I'll go ahead and proceed with the narrative if you'd like.
Please do. Thank you.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a federal grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences passed through the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, a Library Services and Technology Act, or LSTA, grant program entitled Anytime STEM Learning. It's a special project for nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for the purpose of supporting the Sawyer Free Libraries Young Gloucester Scientists Club for elementary and middle school students that supports learning both in and outside the library through continued access to fiscal collections, materials and programming. The grant period is from October first, two thousand twenty-two through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. There is no local match for this grant. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Council Member, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, counselors?
Uh, Je- Jenny and her staff uh, gave a very interesting presentation about this. Uh, everybody on the Budget and Finance Committee was ready to sign up themselves. I think, let alone our, our kids or our grandkids. Uh, but it's a great hands-on program. And involves coordinating with uh, Gloucester School uh, teachers for these, these age students.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Council O'Neil.
I'm sorry, did you say these eight students or how many? Did, what did you say? What, what kind of students?
Did these age students.
Oh, what age?
Uh, they're basically middle school students.
Okay.
Later, o- older elementary school and middle school.
Okay, thank you.
My, my kindergartner isn't going to qualify yet.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council Hera.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is a memorandum, uh, number twenty twenty-three S A two from the DPW Director in the amount of a hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eight dollars and eight cents. And uh, Mike is still with us. Uh, would you like to speak to the uh, how you're using this, these funds?
Great. Thanks, Mike, for sticking with us.
Oh, yes, I wouldn't miss it.
Other things that you'd rather be doing, so it's.
I can't think of one. We work very closely with National Grid, um, primarily gas when they do work in our streets. We often require that they meet a certain paving standard. And it's easier for them just to have the city's paving contractor and the city staff manage the paving projects. And it, which in turn, they submit a check to the city of Gloucesters deposit in the Highway Force account that's transferred back out to pay for my vendor. And that's what this funding is. And most of the work's already been done, so what my vendors anticipating this money. Because it's, it's not a very quick process. National Grid's slow. This process takes a little bit of effort. And then there's the whole, you know, the, the, a payment request takes a few weeks too. So this is a, it's a slow process, but um, I think it's worth it to the city to do it like this. I just hope that my upcoming paving vendors um, feel the same way that I do. Because it is a long time to wait for the money.
Thank you. Any questions from council to Mike Hill on this matter?
I'd just like to thank Mike for his management of this process and I think the city benefits very much from it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, proceed. Um, Council Member.
Uh, reading the motion uh, on a, on a motion by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Council Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted unanimously by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council approve supplemental appropriation twenty twenty-three S A two in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and eight dollars and eight cents from the DPW Highway Force Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Fund Account as noted to the DPW Public Services Repairs and Maintenance Paving Account Number as noted for the various paving projects and road service repairs throughout the city. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Council Member, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business, Council Member.
Uh, the third item from Budget and Finance this evening is a memorandum for uh, twenty twenty-three SBT two from our Chief Financial Officer in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and this relates to the city clerk's office. Perhaps Joanne would like to comment about the background here.
Okay, so um, we were waiting for the new election laws to be passed. They didn't get passed until June twenty-second, which was passed. And we had already passed our annual uh, FY twenty-three budget. And um, going to the administration and also um, requested a meeting with um, Council President um, Val Gilman and Sean Nolan, we realized that we have one election specialist in the office. And with the new election laws, there are so many duties with vote by mail, absentee voting, um, certify and initiative petitions that are all year round that um, it put a lot of um, extra pressure on the other staff in the city clerk's office, even though we all pull in together on election. And now, because of the new election laws, um, in twenty twenty, it was temporary, you know, they passed them. Um, we just found that we just need extra help with the elections. There is no longer just a two-week preparation in this. Now it's two months for one election. So and in addition to doing the election laws, um, the election specialist handles the census, the confirmation of mailings, which is before you inactive a, a, a voter or delete a voter, you have to send out confirmation mailings. You also have to do an annual street listing. So there's extra duties on. So um, we decided and the administration agreed with us and, and the counselors, um, Nolan and uh, Gilman has supported us in adding a, a part-time person to assist not only in the selection uh, mode that we're in right now and, but also all year round to support her. So that, like today, for instance, there's initiative uh, referendum um, petition going around that tomorrow's the deadline that we have to be open till five o'clock and those um, referendum petitions have to be certified by September second for a ballot question in November. So while the election specialist and we're all doing vote by mail, that part-time person would be able to certify those signatures. And those petitions come periodically all year round. So we always have these deadlines and in order to meet these deadlines, we just so we need an, an extra pair of hands for the auction duties. So we're asking your support to um, support, um, for fun, to fund this position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Member, proceed.
Uh, Budget and Finance Committee recommends on a motion by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley, the Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the city council approve special budgetary transfer twenty twenty-three SBT two in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Pension Retirement Fund Account as noted to City Clerk Salary and Wages Temporary Account as noted for the purpose of part-time assistance with extra duties required for elections during fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And I so move enthusiastically since I was in the office this after, this morning or this afternoon. And it's a crazy place. Lots going on, lots of mail coming in and going out and all the desks are occupied.
Council Member made the motion. Council Gross seconded it. Is there a discussion? Um, Council Nolan.
Um, this is money well spent. Um, thank you for uh, Council President Gilman and for Joanne Cinos working together with us um, in the administration for seeing that there really was a shortfall of assistance for the rules. Contrary to what other people may think, um, the mail-in ballots and everything that comes with it and the way that things are done are a great opportunity for this country and for all the voters. And uh, to tax one department on it without finding some money. Um, again, thank you to Joanne, Val and the administration on this and I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Worthley.
I want to echo what Council Nolan just said. Thank you, President Gilman and Joanne Cinos, but also Vice President Nolan. I think you were part of this advocacy and specifically a thank you to the mayor's office for funding this. Um, it is money well spent. Uh, as you know, and Joanne probably knows more, um, I've spent some time in the clerk's office with my kids to try to help out a little bit. And you know, with this mandate, the phones don't stop ringing and people don't stop coming to the door. And so this allows the clerk's office to provide the service that they do to what is, I think, the busiest office in the city and add this extra duty on. So I'm, I'm glad to see this happening and thank Mayor for helping find the money for this. So I'll be supporting you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else like to speak on this motion? So I would um, obviously be supporting this and.
So I would obviously be supporting this and I wanted to just shout out to Holly Dogwilla. Who did an amazing job pulling together job descriptions, salary ranges. Kind of leading the charge for us from an HR standpoint. So and also to to Jill Cahill, our CAO. Because we we worked really well on this and also a shout out to Grace. Who worked with Joanne on this in the office and filled in when Joanne was on vacation to make sure that this kept moving forward. Because timing was of the essence. So totally appreciated. And it was a group effort, including Council Nolan. So thank you. Any other comments? Council Grow and then Council O'Hara?
Yeah, thank you. I thought it was just an opportune moment to remind parents and who have students who are heading off to college. That they ought to make sure that they have their absentee ballot or ballot. Language or applications in hand before they take off to school. You don't want to miss an opportunity to vote just because you've gone off to college somewhere.
Great. Joanne, off the top of your head, what is the date for that?
You, the deadline to request an absent vote by mail application is Monday, August 29th. At 5:00 PM. All applications have to be in the City Clerk's Office and we have to stamp them in. And then the absentee voting also is that day, August 29th at 5:00 PM. And I just want to mention to date, the City Clerk's Office has mailed out about 3,300 vote by mail ballots. To voters who requested them and they are still coming in.
And I would comment that the turnaround time is excellent based on the volume that's coming out of the clerk's office. My family got our three signed applications and and five or six days later, we had our ballots in the mail and received them. So you are all working really hard and make sure that the whole clerk's office know that we really recognize that hard work. So very much appreciated.
Okay, I just want to mention also, this Saturday, the City Clerk's Office will be open from nine to five. For voter registration or changing anything on your voter registration. And also for early voting in person from nine to three in the Kairos Auditorium. I apologize for my granddaughter's.
Okay, so I think we have a motion in a sec. Oh, Council O'Hara.
Sorry.
Just I want to thank Grace for a number of weeks ago when she filled in for Joanne. And explained what the mandates were from the state. I contacted Senator Tarzoff. As obviously, I think a lot of these mandates, none of us knew about. That they're bringing, as we've talked, extreme stress and strain. And extra man hours onto the clerk's office and the entire city as a whole. But the state apparently coming out of Senator Tarzoff's that there is some financial relief. That the state will be directing to cities and towns to to pay for the these mandates that they voted on. Hopefully, those relief checks are coming soon.
Thank you, counselor. Good point. Okay, Council O'Neill?
I would just like to reiterate that I'm really happy that that you're getting some help. You your office is a world of knowledge and I appreciate you knowing things right off the top of your head. And every time I call, you're pleasant and everyone in the office is pleasant. And I know that they're working really hard. So I'm happy for you. You deserve you deserve more help and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a motion, we've got a second, and we've had a discussion, correct? Okay, so we can do a roll call vote. Counselor Majota is absent. Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes, absolutely.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business. Council Memard?
Yes, the fourth and last matter coming from Budget and Finance tonight relates to a memorandum. And 2023 SA3 and 2023 SA4 from the Chief Financial Officer. The two motions total an expenditure of $300,000. And I'll go ahead and read the first for your information. On a motion by supplemental appropriation 2023 SA3 on a motion by Council Memhard, seconded by Council Gross. Budget and Finance voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed. Recommend the City Council approve supplemental appropriation transfer SA3. In the amount of $200,000 from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund Undesignated Fund Balance account as noted. The Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund. Replace the Gloucester High School Heat Exchanger Equipment Building Improvements account number as noted. For the purpose of replacing failing equipment at Gloucester High School and I so move.
Motion made by Council Memard, seconded by Council Worthley. Is there a discussion? Council O'Neill?
Yes, I'm looking at the.
Think they're two separate motions.
I'm looking at the template and that's what Scott read. SA2023 SA3 and SA4. But on the. I'm sorry, on the calendar of business, it's SBT3 and SBT4.
On the agenda?
Yeah, so yeah, can I just explain when we referred out at the last. Meeting, there was an error in that SBT was in the mayor's report. It was corrected at BNF that the SBTs were really SA's. And and I apologize, we should have corrected that on this agenda.
No worries. I just wanted to, you know, make sure that I was.
I'm glad that you brought that up, counselor.
Thank you.
Sharp eyes, basically.
Yeah. Go ahead, Council Worthley.
Benefit of the public. So first, nice catch, Tracy, Council O'Neill. But for the benefit of the public, we sometimes talk in acronyms. And can we elucidate on what SBT and SA's are for the public? I know, but.
This is a supplemental appropriation as as opposed to a supplemental tran- a transfer. Kenny can delay detail it more if you'd like.
Kenny, you're on the call. It's so good to see you. Thank you for hanging with us. So do you have anything to add to this conversation?
Yes, so SBTs and SA's are very, very different. So a special budgetary transfer, you're taking that budget from one department, one account to another account. A supplemental appropriation, you're actually adding to the budget. It's coming from an outside funding source outside of the general fund. As an example, could be free cash, it could be general stabilization account. So you're actually adding it to the the budget. So SBT, SA's are are very different. They're not one in the same. So I just want to make that clear to all the councilors. Thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we're ready to, we did the, we made the first motion on 2023 SA3, which is properly noted. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yep.
Yes, let's have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Second part of this matter, Council Memard?
I'd just like to correct Counselor Grow that my dad always told me that yep is not part of the English language.
I'm bilingual. Thank you very much, Scott, for recognizing that.
The the final supplemental appropriation for your consideration this evening is supplemental appropriation 2023 SA4. And on a motion by Council Memhard, seconded by Council Worthley, Budget and Finance voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed. To recommend the City Council approve supplemental appropriation transfer 2023 SA4. In the amount of $100,000 from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund Undesignated Fund Balance. Account number is noted to the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund Energy Control Software Update. Building Improvements account number is noted for the purpose of updating building energy control software in various buildings throughout the city and I so move.
Okay. Council Council Memard made the motion. It was seconded by Council Gross. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council Majota is absent. Council Memard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neill?
Yes.
Council Worthley?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Aye.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Next order of business. Madam Clerk, and thank you, Council Memard in BNF. Council Gross and Council Worthley, thank you.
Orness and Administration Standing Committee Report of August 15th.
Council Nolan?
We have no actions in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The Planning Development Standing Committee Report of August 17th.
Council Grow?
Thank you very much. We have no items for tonight, but we will be having a site visit for a special permit application at 75 Rocky Neck Avenue. This will take place on Thursday, 3:00 PM of this week. So Thursday, whatever the date is on that, 25th, I believe. At 3:00 PM, 75 Rocky Neck Avenue. Site visit for PND and obviously, everybody is welcome to attend.
A question for Jason. Have the butters been notified of of a site visit meeting or not?
We requested, we requested that the applicant's attorney notify them. So it's our hope that's taking place.
Thank you, because I had some concerned residents that wanted to know what was going on and what the nature of the site visit was.
And there were probably a half dozen that were on the PND conversation as well. So that was good to see. And that's near the Madfish Grill, right? Council Grow and Council Nolan? Okay, so that's where we should look for parking space. So.
Careful.
Yeah. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
There are no scheduled public hearings for this evening, so it'll be councilor's request to the mayor.
Great, so we'll go by order of roll call. So first is Council Memard?
One request. This is not a new request, but I've submitted it before. But Travers Street here in East Gloucester is a public municipal road. The condition of the road is very poor. I believe that it's on the DPW's longer-term paving list along with other neighborhood roads. But the neighbors are distressed that they have not gotten attention and they're looking forward, if they can, to some pothole attention on Travers Street. In the interim before paving.
Thank you, Council Memard. Next is Council Nolan.
I don't have any questions for the mayor. I just want to throw out a thanks for the DPW, the police and the fire. For all their work over this last month between city events, cleanups, fire and other issues. They've done an exemplary job and they really make me proud to be part of the city. I want to thank them all.
Thank you, counselor. Council O'Hara?
Thank you. First, I want to apologize to Counselor Gilman. I appreciate you getting back to me. Concerning the Director of Elder Services. It's as as you mentioned, it's a director's position that doesn't presently doesn't receive confirmation through the City Council. I'll be working with with Joanne after the election to see what we can do. Because obviously, the senior citizens are the largest voters within our city and and they should have representation from the City Council. I want to ask the mayor if if he could consider. Appointing Park and Recreation Commission. It's a five-member commission, one member from each ward. We've lost three fields, the Charles Thomas Fuller School Field, the Joseph Meadows Field. And the Middleton Playground. Obviously, the city is growing in in population. And exercise is so, so important. I think having the Park and Recreation Commission in place would be a great addition. And I certainly and I'm sure my fellow councilors will would be more than happy to to find people from wards to participate. Also, I want to appreciate Counselor Gilman for allowing the moment of silence for the 13 soldiers. As I mentioned, one was from Lawrence, Jo- Joanna Rosario Picado, age 25. Young man, 20 years old from Riverside, California was another one. And it didn't end there. His his brother, age 28, just took his life at the memorial of Dakota. Of Kareem Nakawi, the Lance Corporal, the 20-year-old, his 28-year-old brother just took his life. From the stress of of not not having his brother around. So the war is a terrible thing, but we're so fortunate to have the men and women of our armed services protecting our freedom. That we, as a council, are here to preserve and and represent the people. So again, I appreciate Counselor Gilman for allowing the moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. And it was very moving. I appreciate it. Next, for request is Counselor O'Neill?
I have no requests at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Worthley?
Yes, just a couple. At the beginning of the meeting, you had cited the comments and questions regarding MBTA. And one of them came from Bob Ryan, but the question wasn't necessarily to the MBTA. It was, does someone in the city want to talk about or initiate? Moving of a crosswalk. And so I just want to raise that question for us to contemplate either as a group or going forward. If a counselor, maybe, I think that's technically Ward Three right there. Lines on one side of the street, but um, that's something, it was a question from Bob Ryan to see if we could initiate something. Because I don't think the Traffic Commission can initiate things. That's one. Two is, you know, we go back to the creek, or at least like to go back to the creek. I don't think we're testing right now. I I don't know what the wisdom is behind that. I don't want to question if it is wise or not, but we're not testing. But Goodell Beach Creek is polluted, we know. Magnolia Beach was closed or Craze Beach was closed at some point by Manchester Pavilion Beach was closed during the lobster crate event. I'm sorry, clam flats at different points have been closed. Don't know if they're interrelated. But I would like to ask the mayor's office to test every public beach at the same time. Or I don't even know how it works, but just have them test every beach. I don't think we should be in the dark any longer.
Counsel, I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain that that is done regularly and it is posted on the state's website. I don't know if you've seen that, but I've looked on that from time to time.
I have looked and I have not seen the results posted there. So I will look again. But I don't think we test the waters at Good Harbor. We just test the creek. I think it makes sense to just find out. Long Beach has been closed at some points in Rockport. While our creek is closed and we don't test Good Harbor, it's a question. If the answer is they're fine, let's prove it. I also wanted to draw your attention off and you can see my phone. This was a picture my kids insisted I take because we were trying to understand the value of the sign. I did send a message to the mayor. He said he sent a message to Joe Lucido. I put the request in two weeks ago about the same situation and the sign still exists. So the creek is open-closed to swimming. School will be starting, I think, before our next city council meeting. If you recall, in, I think it might have been May-ish, there was a. Comments from some parents about speeding near the schools. And so I think we should all do what we can. And I don't know if there's any additional resources we can bring up there from the police department or signage or speed. we can bring up there from the police department or signage or speed signs or whatever. Because before we meet next, kids will be running around at school, going to school. And parents also driving recklessly to make sure they beat the bell. Um, not all parents, but some. And um I think we should be extra careful and just make sure we convey that message in concert with the mayor's office. I have nothing else to add right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I am next. So I don't really have any requests, but I do um want to remind everybody that on Thursday at six o'clock, we will be um honoring the um the unveiling ceremony for our historic canon. And it is on Stacy Boulevard. And we encourage you to join us, counselors and member of the public. Senator Tar will be there. Representative Ferrante, Mayor Verga, co-chairs of the Gloucester Four Hundredth Waterfront Committee, Karen Tibbetts and Michael DeCosta. And um it's going to be an exciting event. So we encourage you to come. And just a reminder that there's a citation at the city clerk's office for um counselors to fill out. I know that a few of you got there today and that's appreciated. Um, so um so thank you for that. And um and that's all I have to say. So Counsel Gross.
Um, I don't have any requests for the mayor, but on the same topic of the canon, I just want to give a shout out to David Dow while we have this forum because he has tirelessly worked for the benefit of Stageford Park. Um, he has been a steward of that area for quite a while now. He he got into it because he was disturbed over the the motocross or whatever it was that was there that was really tearing the thing apart. And uh even though they said they, you know, put it back together every time, it's like, there's no way that that was ever getting restored to what it needed to be. But he he has put in thousands of hours, um, hundreds of which have been on this cannon. He has traveled all over the eastern seaboard and uh up to Vermont um to and down to, I forget, South Carolina to get the uh the trunk, uh, the truck of the cannon rebuilt and to get that cannon restored. He is uh just done amazing things with this and I just wanted to make sure that he was mentioned again. That's all.
Great, and we'll we'll include his citation and as information for the public um in our next packet so we can have that on record. So thank you, Counsel Gross, for um for for sharing that. Um, so last but not least is Counsel Grow. And you've been the comedian of the night. We should have like awards at the end of every night. You you've been the funniest tonight.
I don't think so. Um, yep. So I would just ask that while the D P W is over in East Gloucester taking care of Travers, that we also uh do pay some attention to Highland and Mount Pleasant Streets. Uh, I did put a request in a few weeks ago to ask where those streets were in the paving uh arc, uh, list of uh projects to be done. So like that and update on that. And also uh addressing potholes on those roads, please, would be most gratefully received. That's it.
Great, and I want to do a shout out to the counselors because so many of you were at the taco truck um meeting and on Plumco Beach. So in attendance were um included all of our at-large counselors, Counsel Grow, Counsel Worthing, Counsel Gross, Counsel O'Hara called in. Um, and Counsel O'Neal was there and it was really comforting to have so many of you there to have, just to witness a turnout of a hundred and twenty-five residents of Lanesville um for a pretty successful cordial meeting on a tough issue with um with with pretty much pretty good respect to listen to the folks that were in opposition. So just a shout out to all of you for for being there. It was appreciated. I can't tell you how many of my constituents said that they really appreciated uh the support of a lot of members of the council. So thank you.
You had me at Taco Bell.
So you're still funny, Jason. It's been a long night. So.
Get out of here.
Okay, any uh further um print, further.
Motion to adjourn.
Hold on. Counsel Worthy has his hand raised. Go ahead, Counselor.
Forgot this. Um, but Counsel Gross's comments about the cannon made me think of this. Um, for some reason, I was asked to run the ceremony at the city's three hundred and seventy-fifth dedic- uh uh anniversary, the dedication of Fitzhugh Lane. Well, that time was Fitzhugh Lane, now it's FitzHenry Lane. The statue, again, my kids insisted I bring this to the attention. That's the current view of uh FitzHenry Lane. And um if there's a way the D P W can clean that up, so it actually shows what it's supposed to show when we dedicated it twenty-five years ago, I'd appreciate that.
It's Al Duca's sculpture.
That's right.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Grow. Uh, I think it was seconded by Counselmember. It might have been a close tie with Counsel Gross. Let's do our final roll call vote of the evening and we will be reminded that Counsel Majota is absent. Counselmember.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara. I think I read them out of order. Counsel O'Hara. Um, yes. Counsel Worthing.
Yes, good meeting. Thank you.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yep.
Eight in favor, one absent to adjourn this meeting.
Good night.
Twenty-third. Good night. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Kenny. The end.